John Kerr, here. Mark Kees, here. Rob Harper, here. Daryl Smith, here. Rob Smooper, here. David Thomas. Mayor Chambers, here. Dennis Foster, here. Rob Jones, up here. David Nolan, here. Mayor Chambers is here. Bill officials, here. Mary's here.
And the sheriffs.
And the sheriffs.
All right. Has everybody read the minutes? Going to bypass, go ahead and approve them.
Approve them.
Mr. Kerr, approach you to approve the second, Mr. Harper. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
They're approved. Old business none, new business is. Clearview Farms out. Eighty-eight, partial one of ten where they were. Lots nine and ten, this is in Sumner County.
Then let Sumner County handle it.
The only thing we're doing from, the only thing that we're looking at on Clearview Farms is the, uh, the soils area, which we can just, uh...
Where is this? This is at the end of that, those thirteen lots we approved?
This is on, uh, two thirty-one.
Oh, okay.
But we don't have any significant portion of the property, the house and the entryway to the properties are in Sumner County.
So the soil areas in Charlie?
Mm-hmm. Well, the only ones that have good soil. Mary's got recommendations if you might?
Yeah, so there's kind of two options for what you could do here, you could choose to either, you know, by motion of the chair probably, yield reveal, review of the plot to Sumner County, just say hands off since the majority of it is in that county, and the only part like Sam says that's, um, gonna be in Charlestown County is part of lots nine and ten. Uh, or the other option is to make a recommendation on the plot conditioned on approval or a recommendation with the Sumner County Planning Commission.
What are they asking us to do?
We just have to approve our one-fourth of the lot.
For what?
Because we touch it.
Yeah, because it's a subdivision that's occurring, so there's a...
What are they asking for? Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying to get at.
So, so because we touch it, like any portion of it?
But what are we approving?
The soils, the soils area.
So it's a, it's a multiple lot subdivision, two portions, two lots have a portion that are both in Sumner County and in Charlestown County. So your option, since, you know, they are looking for plot approval on this, and because it's cross jurisdictional, they're gonna have to, essentially, they would have to be reviewed by both planning commissions in Sumner County and in Charlestown County. Um, but because the lot area is so small in Charlestown County, and there's really no contractual, um, element of this, since, I mean, the two parts of the lot are not gonna touch any of your right-of-way, they're not gonna have road entrances, it's just the soils area, like Sam's saying. I think the easiest way to do this would just be for a motion from the chair to say you yield review to Sumner County. Essentially left them.
Aren't they, which county are they gonna declare the, the taxes, tax, tax?
Well...
That's up to the tax assessor, essentially.
From what I understand, we're still gonna get this tiny portion, I don't know how it works to be honest with you, I've been going back and forth, both counties, I actually said...
Yeah, the tax assessor will work that out for them.
I haven't figured it out, but what we're doing tonight is, here's the line. This is where the house is gonna go, which is inside Sumner County. This one and this one, and both as a driveway is around Sumner County.
Biggest problem with something like that is now, if there's kids, they pick which county they want to go to.
That'll be decided at the school district level too. The school district will district them and decide which one, which county they'll go to.
Now, state law says that if you, if your properties on the line, you've got property in each county, you pick which one.
I think that is also on taxes, you need to clarify.
Unless they changed it.
Unfortunately, yeah, the, us deciding on the plot won't, won't have any...
I used to have a motion, Mr. Kerr, to...
I don't, I don't think it's that way anymore, pretty much the tax assessors decide. A lot of times if there's a little sliver in one county, then it's like pay it all in the...
Any further discussion on this?
Your side.
Yeah.
His second is my idea.
Which one? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. All right, his second is rezoning. Change, uh, R, A1 to R1 from Mr. Bill first, uh, on two point eight, was eight-three acres or something like that?
Well, until I got surveyed again, I lost a little bit.
Oh, did you?
That's why they say more or less, isn't it?
And I got the list. I asked the question, oh, I forgot what's the answer. What I've got here is a piece of property that sits across the street from me, that has baked it for probably about a year and a half. It originally was five point oh-one acres, and there are two properties that, uh, are now, that what's left of that two point, I mean, the five acres that looks like that, now it's... I was able to purchase the front part, there's some questions as to who really even owns the back part at this hour, because I had met with those people that have a house in the back of this property here, and they think the bank may have the rights to it, but they don't know for sure. But I purchased this back in the fall, and it had a modular mobile home, and I've totally done, trying to clean it up, but it was kind of, you know, linger kind of run down, grass has holed, so it sits across the street, I thought I'd try to clean it up a little bit. So I've come before you guys tonight, and I've done all that work and so forth, to see if I can get a rezon for R1. The property that sits right over here on the corner is about an acre, it's been zoned R1 in the past, so there's a little rivalry about the goes, goes apartment in the back. And I have an interesting part in the back, I put it in the back.
So, this property's actually been, apparently a long-term issue, because there's been two houses on the property for a while. However, that happened, it's actually two different owners. So Bill's actually fixing that issue that should've been fixed a long time ago. So if it does get rezoned, this will fix that situation that's going on, that is really weird. But Mary's got her, um...
Yeah, sure, so, um, he's requesting, as he said, to go from A1, which is agriculture, forestry, to R1 residential for this property. Um, the property is located just north of Hawkins Ranch Road, the surrounding, uh, the property surrounding the subject property are zoned A1 agriculture, forestry. There's one property that he mentioned, there's one property away to the northeast on Hawkins Ranch Road that is zoned R1 residential already. The Charlestown County zoning regulations provide the standards for the R, the A1 zoning district, A1 is pretended, is intended to preserve space for agricultural and forestry uses, and it also provides the R1 zoning district regulations, the R1 that he's looking to go to is suitable for low-density residential development characterized by an open appearance. The permitted uses in the R1 residential zoning district that he's requesting include single-family detached and duplex dwellings. Section five point zero four-two-F provides the bulk zoning standards for residential, so the setbacks. Based on the character of this area, and that there's another R1 property zones nearby, um, staff sees no issue recommending approval of this rezoning.
What kind of homes on it?
It's a double wide mobile home.
So the reduction in the, uh, footprint of the site doesn't cause problems?
No, um, double wide can go on anything, so... And the one on top of the hills, uh, a house, so...
And you're planning on leaving the double wide there?
Safety system's under there.
Yeah, it's been there for apparently a long time, I tried to get all the research on it, because I was actually trying to fix it before Bill came here to talk to me, and, uh, it's been there a while, so with, with two different owners, so it was... I wasn't sure exactly what I could do with forcing the two people to figure out who owns what, um, but...
You fix the pans and the bungee, you're a hell of a man.
So we got it, we got it worked out, Bill and I.
Yeah, it's one of those things where it was just being left alone, and still the back part still lives right now, so it's kind of falling in. The mobile home was in pretty rough shape, somebody kicked in the side door, they stole the air conditioner, and I had to go into a whole lot of work, but it's, it's in nice, I mean, it's taken it all, but it's in good shape. So, yeah, and I, I was handed a map when this first started, a survey map, and it, and it showed the home is from nineteen ninety-nine, so I guess the mobile home's been there at least since then. And the survey was awful good, so I had to resurvey, and then, you know, make some adjustments, but it's, I thought it was two point eight-three, it went to two point eight-oh, but it's give or take.
Motion approved, Mr. Kerr.
I wish I had somebody else, it looks like I'm going to talk.
You do such a good job, Mr. Kerr. You do, you do such... You do such a good job, Mr. Kerr.
Yeah, he knows that's changing, though.
Any further discussions on this? All right, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Vote, pass. All right, got, uh, on Hilltop Drive here, got Mr. Case, has a lot here, he wants to go from a C2 to an R1. Point thirty-five acre lot.
Motion approved.
Second?
We done, we did the other one.
Every month we have one of these on.
Well, we're probably all trying to get that fixed, so...
Okay. You got a motion, Mr. Kerr?
Any further discussion on it? All the papers say aye? All right, his motion passed, Mr. Case, take... This Troy Carmen plant, uh, of, uh, four lots on ten acres, property on Highway two thirty-one, no.
Thank you, Kenny, for y'all, for rezoning, much too bad. And so Mr. Carmen, Mr. Troy Carmen's looking at the subdividing this frontage up out there on two thirty-one. And that's what we proposed, and I'm glad to answer any questions you got, best of kin.
You ain't got no flag lots on it?
Let Mary drive, let Mary hear her portion.
Quick overview, the property is zoned R1 residential, so the applicant's requesting to subdivide this one lot into four lots, it's suitable for that, um, based on the zoning. The land in this area is primarily residential and agriculture, agriculture. There, it was just a few quick issues to clean up on the plot, um, first was just a spelling error, taken care of, um, and then there's a note, so the driveway, did you remove the note on the side?
That's a, that's a TDEC note from the, from their division up there, so, I mean, I don't know that we need to get into altering their notes or fussing with them about their notes. I mean, we're gonna try to hold the soil areas to the back, once again, Mark Webster has totally hashed out everything on this, so these soil areas may change slightly, but we're gonna try to hold them to the back. So it won't matter where the soil areas come in, but it, that's just a standard note that they put on all their plats from the, the, come on, the Cookmore region of TDEC.
Are they saying, they're saying driveways to service back here?
Well, I think, I think what they do is they, they try to, in case they have to have soils up in here, they try to promote bringing in driveways and utilities and stuff along the property lines rather than just right up the guts of the lot.
Okay. That's a big deal, though. Um, and then the other issue with this plot is the, and this is kind of an issue that's come up before, I think we talked about it at the first meeting I was here, when Rick was still working, but, um, the nearest fire hydrant to the proposed lot is over a mile away on Highway two thirty-one. Section four point one oh six point one of the Hart School, of your subdivision regulations states that where a public water main is within reasonable access of the subdivision, as determined by the planning commission, the subdivider shall install adequate water facilities, including fire hydrants, subject to construction and material specifications. And then where required for fire protection, water main shall not be less than six inches in diameter, so based on the subdivision regulations, this is only a four-inch water line, so they wouldn't have to put a fire hydrant in, but then further down in your subdivision regulations, it states that fire hydrants shall be required in all subdivisions, and they shall be located no more than one thousand feet apart, and be within five hundred feet of any residential or commercial or industrial lot. Essentially, there's two spots in your subdivision regulations that contradict each other right now, I think when Rick was here, um, you all talked about not wanting to remove that, so it's there for in the future when you want to require a fire hydrant, but right now, I'm gonna say that, you know, there's no issue giving this plot a recommendation of approval without a variance, because you do have two sections that contradict each other, um, in that area. So staff sees no issue approving the final plot, um, and then those other conditions have been met, so it's good to go.
So what's the driveway situation?
No, the driveway is, TDEC, Cookmore has a standard note that say, that says they want the driveways and the utility lines, like your water line, to come in along the property lines rather than out through the guts of the lot. Now, once again, I'm saying that's just to protect as much soil as they can, but that's just a standard note that they put on every flat that I've done the last twenty years from their department. Um, I don't really know that ever gets enforced, it's just a note that goes in their, in their block of notes.
Make a motion there.
Wait, but what, all right, what would be the issue with taking the note out, I mean, are you planning on contradicting the note?
From a planning perspective, I don't know that you can say to take the note out, because this is, this is, this is TDEC's section of notes, is what I'm saying. In other words, this is not a note I choose to put on there, this is a note that Department of Environment and Conservation tells me to put on there.
In the subject restrictions, so...
Over here where it says subject restrictions, is what she's talking about.
I can reach out to TDEC, which will get clarification on that part of the note. Essentially, it just looks out of place, because it's saying that driveway should come in on side property lines, which I understand that they want them to be, you know, close to the side of the lot to conserve the soil area, but they're obviously not gonna enter on the side property lines, because the, you know, road frontage is where you're gonna have the driveways coming from. So I can reach out to them and just get clarification on that.
It may just be, it may just be a matter of wording, I think what they're saying is they, they want the driveways to come along the boundary lines as they leave the road.
Right, not actually enter the property.
Not actually enter the property line, sideways, yes.
I'll just reach out to them and get clarification on that move, if we could, yeah.
Second, Mr. Kerr, unless somebody else... So Harper and Kerr?
Yep.
Mr. Harper made a motion.
Any further discussion on this? All right, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Motion passed. Have a little information here from the bill, Mr. Kerr.
All right, so I need a good head count of who wants to go. The, it's training and continuing education for planning commission and board zoning appeals members. It is on March the thirtieth, five o'clock to nine.
What day of the week's that?
Monday. So I need, I need a good head count, because if we don't pre-register for them, it's five dollars more per person, so I, I need to know ahead of time. Uh, so I sent out the email, and I got a few responses, but I didn't get everybody.
We'll do a quick plug, this would be all four of your training hours for the whole year, one session, sit down, have a good lineup of speakers, so, um, and dinner. So, you know, should be a pretty good way to get your training done, quick.
So raise your hand if you got one. Keep them up.
We can make this, it's not our commission making this.
No. I've already got it on the calendar. You're good, thank you.
Just a quick reminder, the four hours of training is a state requirement, state law, so...
What kind of start?
We'll make sure everyone gets that four hours in at some point this year.
So there's nothing on the calendar for March thirtieth, so...
What happened then?
Let me finish my notes, and then I'll do my part.
I guess you'll reach out to Board of Zoning Appeals, they can go to that too, can't they?
I'm gonna try to get them to go, I've gotta see them. Sorry, let me get back to my...
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, yeah, I can see them on the seventeenth, so we've got a lot of things to talk about then. All right, so, sorry. Bill permits total for all of last year, I provided that to y'all, it was, uh, permit fees were a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. Impact fees were a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Total combined was two hundred and ninety-seven thousand five hundred.
Is that for the month?
For the year.
No.
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, so... It's, it's steadily staying the same slash going up. I went back and looked at the records, and last year we had quite a bit come in, because Mike guys did all those apartments for the prison, they did it up there, so that brought in a ton. But we had more houses built this year than we had built last year, so...
So far?
So far. I should say more houses built in twenty nineteen than we did in twenty eighteen, so...
Are they still all down that way, or are they up this way somewhere now?
Um, we got some brown and, um, they're all on that side of the county, um, they're not all on two thirty-one, though. Um, we have probably twenty of them out, so, but the majority are going, I'm not...
Still, still down that way, okay.
But maybe that'll change quickly when the road cuts in.
Yeah, I saw them drilling up there that day.
She's been drilled.
It's only been twenty years. Anyway, that's about time. They drilled on my property last year, now they're drilling up, up here at Highway ten this year.
So you mentioned cell phone tower, the tower, what is that?
So the tower, apparently, I got the cart before the horse, the tower's gotta go in front of the BZI, and they come back to y'all, so it's opposite of everything else, so, um, which, I don't know why, but that's what it's written. So it needs to go in front of the BZI first, and then come back to y'all.
Essentially, Board of Zoning Appeals has to approve the use, as a special exception, before you look at the site plan, to make sure that we have a lot.
It's out towards eleven, and it's on a high plateau area that, actually, the rising tower got approved out there, uh, but they never came in front of the planning commission, so it never officially got approved. They went in front of the BZI and got approval, and then I guess they pulled the plug on it, so...
They didn't build it?
No, they only have one year to start construction, but they had to come in front of y'all first, so, after the BZI. So now ATTs want to go on the property next door to it, so, um...
So do we have a lot coming up in the future?
Out on the seventeenth, right, the BZI?
Yeah, so the seventeenth would be where the cell tower will go and get the special condition, I can't remember what it's called in your code, special use, special exception approved, and then next month you would see the site plan for the tower.
Yeah, which...
I'm just talking about anything, I mean, a lot of, do we have a lot of stuff coming up that we always know?
Well, I'm trying to get a marble company, um, which have been doing a lot of light work, because the property that they were wanting to buy is, it's frankly messed up, so the zoning lines on it are not whereby a map are showing they are, so we have tax maps showing one thing, and zoning showing one thing, and I've, I've requested the deeds, uh, the, the last plaque that was done on it, to see what it really is, um, and then now I've got to figure out where the confusion is. I'm trying to get the marble company to move in and get all that, so you are gonna be seeing a rezon for the property here shortly, uh, because part of it is, uh, C1, I think. Yeah, part of it's C1, but the part that's right next to it that covers the barn portion, it's not, it's agriculture. But to make that all C1 is what they want.
Two thirty-one, that's it?
The old horse, uh, olive oil. So they want to go in there, so, and I spoke to the guy for, uh, out at the nuclear plant that runs, they're trying to get some more business out there, so we had a long conversation about getting more businesses, you know, out there, so... So we got quite a thing, quite a few things in the pipeline of what's coming up, and hopefully we get businesses, get some taxes.
Yeah, just along those lines, as the new guy, if y'all, y'all don't mind me asking, do, I'm not sure how I'm gonna ask it, but do we as a committee, you know, the, do we have, like, a plan is, this is where we want to see Charlestown County go, this is, these are the areas we want to see, um, we want to encourage businesses to come in and zone this commercial and put the businesses here, this is where we would like to see resident, res... Do we have that kind of plan? Do we know what the leadership and what the residents of Charlestown County want to see this place become?
I've seen, um, I cleaned the office Thursday, it was going through all the stuff, it's a massive amount of folders, but I, I saw a plan from years ago. I don't know if we have anything current, so...
Yeah, I mean, to me, and again, I'm the new guy, and I don't, don't wanna, you know...
No, you're right, we need, we, we do need one, that's something that I was...
Somebody, we, when we just, folks come in and, and ask us to approve rezoning, we need some sort of vision to tell us, yep, that's along our plan right there, you know, or, no, that's not what the people of Charlestown County want to see. So, that's, that's all I'm asking.
I, I'm gonna work on it, it's on my notes to do, uh, because you're not the first person to ask. I found an older copy, um, but we don't have any that we're, so I've been focusing on, when businesses ask me, is pointing them to the locations that are already zoned properly, that were pre-thought of. So, um, we've got, uh, like I said, out of the nuclear plant, there's a lot of area that's already preset out for that, and they have sewage out there, and I have one, so, um, but you are right, so...
I was gonna say, I'm sure you have one, I haven't seen it, but state laws does require a growth plan for each of the counties, so there probably is one on the books, but it probably hasn't been updated in a very, very long period of time. Um, and Sam, I can give you some guidance on, um, where to go through for that process, and I just...
I'll chip in on this one. I've already talked to Greater Nashville Regional Council about coming in and doing a strategic plan, right now they're assisting Gallatin with their comprehensive development plan, which followed them doing their strategic planning, so when they get done with Gallatin, I've asked them to come over here and start that process, but our current comprehensive plan's from nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, something like that.
Yeah, and so, that's what the mayor said, I'm working on the Gallatin Beltline right now, so, um, and I know we have a number of areas that are interested in us doing that as well, so, certainly, an opportunity that GNRC can look into.
Um, another thing that's on my list is trying to get our, uh, our zoning regulations for county and city combined into a metro regulation, so... Which shouldn't be too difficult, I mean, they're, they're almost mirrored each other, but they have slight deviations throughout it, so... Some more stuff on the list to do.
What about the operation cleanup, Hoffman and those guys, they had anything?
So Hoffman and I have an agreement on getting his portion cleaned out, we're working on it, um, the agreement is solely progressing... Most people won't know, but I, I know the details of it. There's a lot of stuff over there that's already been marked to be removed. He's just waiting on the person that said that they want it to come get it.
Who's this?
Mr. Hoffman. Um, he has marked a lot of things to be moved. Just personally, he had that agreement with to get them moved, hasn't come picked up. So he has done his part that I asked him to do, and we're working through it. But we have had success on several other properties, too, so... But Mr. Hoffman has done everything I asked him to do, so... Anything else?
Looking for their magic words.
Make a motion to adjourn.